Go on here. So we might just have to let other people in as they join. I think it was joined this the wrong meeting or the same meeting cause there's something but. You are audio, video and.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Ashington County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, June tenth. Like to call the meeting to order um and if our uh. Finance Director would complete roll call for us.
Uh. Commissioner Quinn.
Present.
Commissioner Noel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Right, thank you for that. Uh, we do not have an invocation scheduled today, but if you please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public comment. Seeing none. Approval of the agenda. So I have two items to add to the agenda, one under the finance director with uh. A purchase order for BG Consultants for Engineering Services at the Roden Bridge Facility. The three thousand two fifty-six and one under Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge Superintendent, a P O uh for Fox Culvert Repair on Bourbon Road. With those two additions, look for a motion to approve this week's agenda.
So second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Consent agenda, we have the meetings from the meeting minutes from June third and then the finance director review.
All right, good morning. Um, we did not have any payroll this week. Uh, the credit cards. Um, for payment on Wednesday, June eleventh was two thousand six forty-three forty. It consists of. Uh seventeen dollars and forty-seven cents to the appraisers office for gold charges. For training. Forty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents for the clerk for training meal expenses. Sixty dollars to the Roden Bridge Department for new hire background checks. And then two thousand five sixteen oh five to EMS. There's several things, ambulance service permit renewals. Medical waste supplies, new higher background checks, cable services. Auto parts, shop supplies, membership renewals. Uh, to the Kansas Emergency Medical Services Association. Um, and then. Uh, for the total accounts payable run for the six eleven check date, which in my email it says six four, but six eleven. It's a hundred and thirty-five thousand, three forty-two oh six. It's a little bigger. Um, there's some Ottawa Road things on there. There's a big charge for the. Medical at the jail this time. Um, it's.
How long?
It it's not.
Trump.
Says that you are online. We're we're on here.
Yeah.
I know.
We're seeing. Okay, but we're recording.
It it says it's recording. Um. I I fear that if we end the meeting, then it would lose everything that we already have done.
Okay, let's just keep recording.
I'm fearful if no one else can get in. Is it really there? Oh. Although they were trying to join them.
Can we save it in two different, like save that one and then?
I think you would have to end this meeting, which should. Preserve what has been recorded and then we just start all over.
Part two.
Part two.
Okay.
She wants to do that.
Yeah, want to do that.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so if you end there.
We're gonna get.
Okay. Good. Perfect. Okay, awesome.
Your video is up, it's just not up. But there.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, so this will be part two of today's meeting. Um, we were having some technical difficulties, so. Um, the agenda down to the end of consent agenda presentation uh was on the first recorded video. So I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Same.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. All right, commission comments. Commissioner Campbell?
Uh, wait. Uh, I'm impressed with how the Lake. Ashen County Lake Committee is coming along. And I look forward to. Seeing their progress as as we move along here. Um. Uh, also, I want to. Kind of make a public announcement. There's a. There's a meeting in Effingham at the Blue Building um tomorrow, five thirty. And uh, Dr. Insley from K State. Is going to be there presenting information on blue green algae. Uh. I I. I'm a, I'm in the know somewhat of that because uh. Uh, I have property. Uh, in the county. And uh, it's affected uh, the lake water that that. Did that property. Um, and so I'm going to attend just as a concerned. Uh, resident of Ashen County. Um, it's, this is a invasive issue across the country, but Kansas. Um, has at least forty-eight of the last time I checked uh. Different. Water bodies that are that are affected by this. So it's pretty pervasive and hopefully. This Dr. Insley will give us some good information. Uh, yeah, I also mentioned this because our county extension office is working this issue. So uh, uh, I have spoken with the county extension office. On this issue and uh, they have been a lot of help. Uh, with us.
Awesome.
They they facilitated this meeting with Dr. Insley, so.
Nice.
Good stuff.
All right, Commissioner Noel?
I don't have any comments today.
Okay, um, I have a chamber board meeting tomorrow um this week, so that's all I have. Um, no petitions or proclamations this week, so next up we have uh new business. Um. And we have Stevie Durkin from the Guidance Center, uh, the Guidance Center Director with the twenty twenty-six budget request.
Might print into that documentation off for you guys in power.
Thank you.
It's perfect.
Yeah, welcome.
Right.
You can move the chair up there if you want to.
Good morning, everybody.
Yeah, but I can't.
Even though he's back there, feel free to direct any questions, Paul, if you want.
Uh, good morning, everybody. Um, first off, I'm just going to throw out there that I'm a little under the weather, so I'm going to ask for your grace on this. I'm not contagious anything, uh, but appreciate your time. Um, as we come and kind of talk about the Guidance Center. Um, I know annually, this is something that you guys have kind of gone through. Keith Rickard for many, many, many years came through um Ashington County and our other counties to uh request county support. Uh, Dr. Will Warrens came last year. Um, as an interim executive director, um, and then in August of last year, I stepped in as a chief executive officer of the Guidance Center. Um, we've all had conversations in my other role, which was the Ashington Community Health Clinic. I served as the CEO there. For about seven or eight years and prior to that, I was actually at the Guidance Center. So my two roles have really been focused in on Ashington County, um, and now a little bit more focused in on Leavenworth and Jefferson County. Um, so last year, I know that when Dr. Will Warrens came in, he's our chief medical officer, uh, came in, he really talked about the transition. Uh, mental health in the state of Kansas. Okay, I know um at the um. The uh, your annual conference, I don't know what exactly what it's called, your annual conference, our association actually provided a breakout session. I think addressing uh and providing some education on what has really transpired in the realm of behavioral health. Uh, when I started in two thousand and seven at the Guidance Center, I was a student. Um, and I came into the organization simply as a practicum student. I was in grad school and I learned uh the the bare bones of what mental health really was. In the state of Kansas. After that, I transitioned to our Ashison Office. I provided direct patient care for many years. Then I transitioned into the clinic administrator role. So if you know Jeanette Clark, Jeanette Clark is now our uh clinic administrator here in Ashison. Um, and at that time she took over that role after I left for the Ashison Community Health Clinic. When I came back last August, I came back to an organization that was vastly different than the one I left in two thousand seventeen. And the reason for that was was the transition from a community mental health center model. Now I do want to provide clarity. We are still the community mental health center. But there's an extra program that we are now a part of called a certified community behavioral health clinic. Okay? So what that means in our in our communities, and I apologize if this is information that you learned at the breakout uh at your conference. Uh, what this means is really that mental health was reformed in Kansas again. Um, it allowed us to expand our services and in my letter, you'll see a few of those examples of what that actually looks like. Um. It changed the way that we're reimbursed for services. We are now in a position where we are reimbursed based on the cost of our care. Uh, which has really done great things for the Guidance Center. It's allowed us to expand in services, but that's also allowed us to expand in staff. The great thing about that is that overall the intent is to expand access to care. Okay? We want to cre- increase access points for people that need mental health care before it gets to a crisis. So that we can intervene more effectively. It's the same model in healthcare and general primary care. You're going to want to intervene early. Uh, to prevent the higher cost services down the road and ultimately people suffering uh as a result of not getting the care that they need at that point. Um, so in this transition, what this has meant to Ashington County and Leavenworth County and Jefferson County, although in different phases that I will admit. Um, is that we're rolling out additional services. So in my, in my letter, you'll see. Um, that one of the, one of the services that has really taken off here in Ashington County is individual placement and support services. Now think of individuals that the Guidance Center typically serves. They come in for medication management, individual therapy. Case management, which is more of like a community-based uh service, helping them maintain daily uh activities of life and. Uh, you know, just checking in on people in their mental health state. This is a service that we now are able to add to help people get back to the workforce. Um, I gave legislative testimony earlier this year, uh, and it was a great experience and this is the one that seemed to be really resonating with people. Is that the individuals that we're serving oftentimes are categorized as severe and persistently mentally mentally ill, so severe and persistent mental illness. Okay? So this means that a lot of times these are individuals that are in and out of psychiatric hospitals. They've had to be there multiple times in order to meet this uh category, uh, and we can offer an enhanced level of service to them. So if you think of case management, the services we provide to just kind of maintain daily activities. This individual placement support now helps this individual get back into the workforce. And what that has looked like for us. Um, is that the, this team will engage these adults, will talk through what is their area of interest. Implement coping skills, reinforce skills that they're learning and being taught in treatment. Um, in order to maintain placement. They find uh employment locations that are more open. To working with individuals that may need a little bit more accommodations, but we've seen a lot of success in this program. Uh, which is one that really makes us excited. When I first came in in August. Um, I came into this and I and I heard immediately that we were at capacity for this service. And then we had a waitlist. Well, we've grown this team in all three counties. We've grown this team to get rid of that waitlist, but we know that more individuals are coming. So we've helped people get into educational placements. We've helped people get into dog walking uh jobs. Uh, we've had. People, we've worked with people to get them in a janitorial type of work or other locations like that. With employers that understand the need to work with us as partners to support these individuals. Um, the other uh program that we've really expanded to is assertive community treatment. So in our, in these counties, and this is one that needs to expand more into Ashington County and Jefferson County. Assertive community treatment really helps to identify the most high-risk uh at need uh individuals in our county, and this is a team. That will engage these individuals wherever they're at. So in Leavenworth County, what this could look like in Ashison too, it could look like we see individuals that are unhoused. Right? They can't, they're they're not able to maintain housing. Uh, maybe they're sleeping down by the river. Maybe they're under a bridge. This team is identifying those individuals and we're engaging them. Trying to get them into treatment. Now notice I said try, we're trying to get these individuals into treatment because we cannot force anyone into treatment. The only time that we can is when somebody is really at risk to themselves or other people, then we have the ability to initiate a hospitalization. But again, that's not the route that we always, that we always want to go, right? Uh, mobile crisis response is another form of service that um. I think is shown to be very beneficial. Again, this is primarily uh in uh Leavenworth. But we've got a new crisis director, Chloe Grabansky, that will begin to roll this program out. More impactfully in Ashington County and Jefferson County. Uh, individuals that are calling uh the suicide hotline. Connects with us so that we can engage our staff and go out to support people. A lot of times these are kids. They're experiencing suicidal ideation that we need to go out and gauge and make sure that we're, we're offering support, placement, facilitation of placement that they may need. Um, obviously, it's also adults. Ultimately, what we want to do is decrease any unnecessary law enforcement contact. Because that's not always the right path, right? Sometimes this looks like a partnership in this service and um you local law enforcement. But again, we want to make sure that individuals get to the right level of care. Okay? The ultimately, um. Yeah, programs help manage uh serious mental illness, return to employment, obtain housing, avoid hospitalization or incarceration. You know, ultimately what we continue to see, even though this system in the state of Kansas has reformed. We've shown an incredible jump in the statistics in the state of Kansas on um our our outcomes. We are now twenty-first in the United States. Uh, when it comes to mental health care, uh, and a lot of that was triggered by the change to the CCBHC program. Um, allowing us to get reimbursed more effectively for the services that we provide, but then also some grant funds to support a lot of work that goes unreimbursed from the state. Um, and from the feds. Um, so ultimately, there's a, there's a lot more work to be done. When CCBHC came around, I already noted that we increased services, we increased staff. When you increase access, you increase access. Meaning that individuals are coming into us now that have not been able to get to us. Which means that we're seeing a continued rise in the amount of uninsured patients that are accessing services here. Which is why we continue to come to the county to help us manage that that dollar, that dollar amount. Um. But ultimately, that that's what we're here for. The Guidance Center is one of a few uh organizations in Ashington County, uh, maybe in northeast, not northeast Kansas, but in Ashington County. That has the obligation to serve people regardless of their ability to pay. We will not turn people away if they cannot pay for service. Required services, I should say. There are some services that we can't provide uh for free, but uh other services when an individual needs it and they access. Um, us for that, that is our obligation to be able to provide that service. Okay? Um, you'll continue to see the the same traditional services that we continue, that we've always provided here. Outpatient therapy, medication management. We have a medication management provider here five days a week. Uh, we have a a growing outpatient clinician team here in Ashison, meaning that we are on the verge of needing to hire an additional outpatient therapist to accommodate. Uh, demands. Uh, ultimately, we've got some space issues uh in our location. I feel like that's a, that's a common theme among all nonprofits is that space is a challenge for us. Um, but ultimately, I wanted to to uh also give you some information about some things that I feel like are really impactful here in Ashison County. Um, Community Corrections, uh, Katie Sparks uh reached out to us many, many months ago about an opportunity. To hire a licensed clinician, so a therapist, graduate level training or higher. Um, to work with individuals that are in the juvenile justice program. Um, earlier or late last week, uh, we actually hired this individual. So through this partnership and a grant that Community Corrections. Access, the Guidance Center and Community Corrections are going to partner on this, making sure that we're providing and addressing mental health needs at Community Corrections. But then also it allows us to refer over to other needed services that families or these children may need. Uh, to better support them. Okay, I already mentioned that we're close to to needing an additional clinician here in the Ashison Office, which I think is exciting. When I was the clinic administrator here. Uh, ten-ish years ago, uh, we've kind of been steady at the same number of clinicians, but what we're seeing is an increase. In people needing services. Uh, so to be on the cusp of needing an additional clinician, I think is a great, it's a great thing to be able to offer the community. Uh. It's not a great thing that the need continues to rise, but it is a great thing that we are able to provide that additional uh clinician. Um, when the time comes. Um, expansion of the adult psychosocial program. So when I started as a student in Leavenworth, this is the program that I worked in. Uh, these are individuals that again have been diagnosed with a disorder that uh uh. And they meet criteria for severe and persistent mental illness. Okay, so in and out of psychiatric hospital. Times a lot of need to maintain consistent contact with these individuals. This program has always been uh based in our Leavenworth County office. If you're familiar with that, it's in the basement. It takes up a pretty good. Uh, chunk of our real estate there, but it's a fantastic program and it provides a lot of positive outcomes. For a long time, we've had individuals from Ashison County being transported down to Leavenworth to take part in that program. We've expanded that program into Ashison County. Uh, one of the local churches allowed us to access the space, uh, and a true partnership allows us to kind of offer that right now, one day a week. Uh, but the Dr. Palacio, Dr. Drew Palacio and his team are of the opinion that uh our goal is to get to about three days a week of that. Timetable, I'm not sure on that, but that has started here in Ashison County. Um, here recently, uh, we wrote a uh request for a suicide prevention grant. Um, so in Leavenworth County, we've had some coalition, some suicide prevention coalition work. Where individuals in different areas of expertise come in and talk about the needs of the community. Uh, we wrote this grant with all three counties in mind. So we've got Ashison County, Jefferson County and Leavenworth County. Uh, what Ashison County will see is the opportunity to receive training to identify suicidal ideation, how to respond to that. How to contact the appropriate system, the mental health system, to better support those individuals. Uh, so we're excited to roll that out in Ashison County. So more information to come on that. As well. One thing that I would really love, um, and I'm going to put it on your radar and you'll get some official communication from us uh here in the near future. The Association of Community Mental Health Centers um has putting on legislative town halls. And what that's going to look like is they're basically traveling the entire state of Kansas. And we're engaging with local legislators, local elected officials, um, so that we can all come together and talk about what mental health is. What the, what, where the needs continue to be, um, and how counties can support, how the state can support, how the federal can support. And then also how the Guidance Center can be a better partner with the county uh as we move forward too. Anticipated date for that is July thirty-first. That will be in our Leavenworth. It'll, it'll be in Leavenworth. I was going to say our Leavenworth location, but that's not accurate. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna host that in Leavenworth. Um, so I'll give some comments um. Uh, about kind of what the Guidance Center is doing and then Kyle Kessler and Michelle Ponse from our association will give a little bit more information. So we'll reach out again to elected officials. Yeah.
July, what'd you say, twenty-third?
Thirty-first.
Oh, thirty.
Yep, thirty-first. Uh, but again, keep an eye out for official communication. I I think that date is settled. Uh, but locations kind of, you know, throw that in flux, but we would love if you all are able to attend, we would love to have you. Um, so please just keep that in mind. Um, so the, so the, the one thing that I did want to mention, uh, when I came in to. Uh, this position in August of last year, it was pretty close after that or right before that we got notice. That Ashington County was not going to be able to to offer any financial support to the Guidance Center last year. Um, and I understand things are, things are tight. Um, very, very tight. Uh, and I know you all are working incredibly hard to make hard decisions. Uh, so I respect that certainly. The, the one thing that I did want to point out because I do feel like it is my role, we are currently the only county in Kansas that does not offer. Any direct financial support to the mental health center. Now, I don't mean to say that as like a, a dig at the county, because again, I know you all are working on very difficult things. The ask that I have of the county is. What information? Or data? Or anecdotal evidence can we give to be, to be better reporters of the work that we're doing in Ashison County? Um, and then also what other ways would it be? Would would benefit our relationship with county and the Guidance Center? How can we be a better partner for the county? So the first one, I guess I would, would stick on that. Does anything come to mind when it comes to data or information? Uh, because I know that sometimes you just kind of get flooded with a whole lot of information. Internally, we are working really hard to pare down and specify and be more specific. In our data, so that is a goal of ours, which is what is prompting me to ask that question. Um, because we know you all have hard decisions to make. So.
Yeah, I. Would, we. So I'm, I'm on, uh, you, you know that I'm on the board with the county corrections.
Yeah.
Adult and. And we. They pretty much share. Their budget and kind of where.
Yeah.
The, the different grants they get. How it goes out. So we're kind of. Well aware about that, but versus the Guidance Center. We aren't.
Yeah.
I don't know if we want to get into that, if we want to see that, because it's got to be a pretty. You know, lengthy budget, uh, but probably wouldn't hurt to have that information in front of me so that I can. I I'll be honest with you, when I look at those, I weigh. Okay, what are we getting? What's this organization getting federally, state? How, you know, how are they operating? You're the expert. On it. You're, you're, you're telling us that. Anything that we can give is going to benefit.
Yep.
Uh, of course, you know, when I hear, well, we're the only county. Then I ask myself, are, but other, other counties offering? What we have in Ashison. I mean, we.
You all would know that.
I, I, I'm pretty sure. That there are counties out there that. Are coming to Ashison. For, 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 for help. I know that's a fact. That you have residents coming from outside of Ashison.
Yep.
To get the help they need, whether it's at the health clinic or through the Guidance Center.
Yeah.
They are coming here in droves. So Ashison has. A lot to offer. We, we have, we're very. How do I put this? Um. Uh. We're very open. Ashison is the helping others. And uh, so that would help me if I were able to see kind of the bottom line.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know if you, you know, have to drill down on every single, you know, but just an overall kind of.
Yeah.
Budgetary information. It would help me understand. Where all that's coming from.
Yeah.
Um, about you guys, anything coming from you?
It could be interesting to know we're on the stabilization center. How often that's been accessed by Ashison County.
Yep.
Residents.
Yep. No, I think that's a great one. Um, internally, so I, we've, we've worked to kind of pin down that data. Um, and there, there's, there's a lot of data that we've got to sift through in order to get that, but I will work on providing some kind of feedback on what that number looks like.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Oh, yeah, I never, it's, it's. Ultimately, the, the way that we account for some of these different things, it makes some of it a little bit more challenging and it requires a lot of manual work to go in and figure out. Where an individual is actually from before they access uh Guiding Light's Crisis Stabilization Unit. Uh, so it's going to take a little bit of time, but we can work on continuing to refine that process. It is just manual uh at this point. Uh, which drives Paul and I a little uh, uh, you know, up the wall a little bit, but.
We'll work on. Hit by the things too, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It has to be completely.
Yep. Yep.
Blind, but yet.
Yep.
You need, there's data to be extracted, but yet it needs to be like a blind state.
Just a number of patients. Yeah, yeah. So we'll work on that. Um, I do feel really great about our crisis stabilization unit. So shortly after I came into the organization, we had a little bit of. Turnover uh in that role, but I've already, I, I think mentioned Chloe Grabansky's name. turnover in that role, but I've already, I, I think mentioned Chloe Grabansky's name. She's our crisis director now. And has really stepped into that role and, and taken over, which is what that organization needs. One of the goals that we have is for all seven counties that that stabilization unit serves to really understand what that stabilization unit is. Is it an inpatient psychiatric hospital? No, it's not. It's a stabilization unit, but we need to be good partners with Amberwell, Amberwell Atchison, Amberwell Hiawatha, other places that need us, law enforcement, sheriff, police, you know, everybody. We need to be good partners on that. And part of it is you just got to know what it is and where it's at and how you access it. So Chloe's, Chloe is working on that and I feel confident in the future that we're going to have more clarity on that. So I'll work on getting that data piece to you.
For me, I, I think just the more collaboration and the more conversations we can have together in our county to educate all of us on, I mean, your, your letter kind of sums it up, right? In rural counties like Atchison, access is even more limited due to provider shortages and financial barriers. Like, we hear that, right? We hear that across the board from Amberwell, every, you know, our EMS is stretched thin, they respond to the, you know, emergency room, all the things, local law enforcement. All the things, just bringing us all together to have, and you know, I know the hospital just completed their survey, so they're going to have that meeting and maybe that will be the place to kind of initiate these conversations, but really just understanding from a county level, what mental health, substance abuse, all the things happening, the effects they're having on, on all of these organizations, because everyone's feeling it.
I, I think it's an, it's incredibly important to, and I think most of you probably all know this, so like who's required to do what? Because the guidance center is required to do a lot of work, that other individuals or other organizations aren't. Amberwell's the same way. Actually, community, or I'm sorry, always community health center is the same way. Most of you, I think, know this about me, I'm very collaborative by nature. I believe strongly in collaboration because we are not in a position to really have one organization do all of this work. We have to collaborate. The workforce is not there, the dollars are not there, and quite frankly, the way these systems are, are supported is through an insurance base. We don't have enough diversity in that insurance population and the patient population to do all of this within one organization. So it does require collaboration. I think you all know I'm a lifelong Atchison County resident. Swear, born and raised. By the four years I was at Pittsburgh State, I've always been right here in this county. I feel professionally more excited about the leadership that we have in the county right now in these collaborative partners. I can tell you that the frequent monthly meetings with Jared Abel at, at Amberwell are taking place. We've got one on the books this week, next week, soon. Because we need to work through this stuff together. Eventually, I don't, have not reached out to Sheriff Lori at all, but that's another contact that we need to make. Because Leavenworth County, we've been able to do a few more different things prior to me coming into this role, but like a jail liaison. You know, individuals that are just doing different, different work in the jails with individuals to support them before they are, are released. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done. It does take time and I think that's really where the partnership comes with the county. And I, I agree with your point, us being in a position where we better illustrate what that partnership would look like, that's our responsibility. And we'll work hard to do that. But a lot of that work, like the ju, the jail liaison, it either comes through a grant or we talk about a partnership that maybe we need some dollars to cover that service to be able to provide it, because it's not reimbursable by insurance. If it's not reimbursable by insurance, insurance or a grant, then we're not, we're not able to sustain it. The, the biggest frustration that I've always had in any system is you get some motivation, you build a program and then the, the mechanism to sustain it drops off the map and then you're just kind of left holding the bag. And that's a really difficult spot to be in. So, and that, that happens frequently, not just in mental health, but in healthcare in general. We, I've seen it in, in every location I've worked at. So, but yeah, I agree with your points, Commissioner Quinn. So certainly open to that, that conversation and hope to see that collaboration continue to take place here in the county.
Thank you. Do you guys have any other questions for CB or Paul?
No, I just, I'm glad you started off with the mental health issue, because I don't know anybody that doesn't think that that's you know, we went through this phase where it was done one way and then we just, it just kind of dropped off the radar and now we're trying to build back up because we, we're seeing it every day. We see the impact. And the fact that you're working with, you know, EMS or sheriff, local police. That's, that has to be done. I mean, I don't think it's even a question, have to do that, because those are the folks that have the initial contact. So even though you are going to reach out and, and try to find these folks out in the communities, you're still going to have those that you can't reach and you have to have the connection. So those, those are the, those first responders are the ones that I think are probably almost as important, as important as the ones that you're going to reach before. Because the idea is to reach it before they, they get to that point where there's a crisis, right? And so, so no, I, I'm a hundred percent behind what you guys are doing.
Appreciate that. So just in summary, and I know I've got it in my letter, I mean, we would love for you to just come back on the, the, the financial kind of contribution to what we're doing. It looks like the last contribution, I guess that'd be twenty twenty-four, was fifty thousand dollars for our local office and ten thousand dollars for Guiding Light's credit, crisis stabilization unit. That's our request, but ultimately, like I said, I'm going to acknowledge that you all are in a, in a difficult position. I know you got a lot of passionate people that come in and, and make their pleas and for very good reasons, but we would love to have that partnership reestablished. And in closing, I will tie together the, the, your two comments. Yours about the community needs assessment that Amberwell and the survey that they just done, and that mental health continues to be a, a need. You know, I can, I can make this prediction and nobody's going to remember if I'm wrong and nobody's going to remember if I'm right. But I would shock me if through that, that community needs assessment, that meeting, that if two of the top three needs in the community are not mental health and recovery services. Those are going to, those are historically always two of the top three, if not two of the top five, but they're always noted. So the need continues to just rise and it does kind of go on a little bit of a, a wave and that's, that's typically what, you know, mental health and physical healthcare kind of looks like sometimes. But your, your points about the, the access points, early intervention, making sure we're partnered with the right people is something that we're going to focus on. So. Appreciate all your time. Thank you all very much.
Next, we were going to do Atchison County survey discussion. Who do you guys want to talk about any of that for the survey or not?
Honestly, I think that's a, that's a more of a workshop. Thing, we just need to drill down on exactly.
Do you, well, it was listed as workshop. Do you want to recess in a workshop or you want to keep go?
Either before or after the meeting. The, one of those two workshops, so either, Eric, how do you feel about? I feel like it's just, we're, we're not at the point where we're actually talking about the implementation. We're just drilling down on what we're going to ask and, yeah.
Okay. Mark Seltner, Finance Director. Consideration for PO for cyber incident deductible, request for payment for Effingham Sports Complex and EO for BG Consultants.
So this first one is the deductible for the cyber incident. I am not sure of where you want to pay it from. So I prepared two purchase orders, one of which is the reserve fund. Or we use the cyber incident line item that was created out of county general to pay for it. It's four thousand, four hundred dollars and fifty cents. It is K Camp's legal fees that was associated with the whole ordeal. They have a letter that says our deductible is ten thousand, but they only spent four thousand, four hundred and fifty cents. So that's all that we have to pay K Camp. It wasn't as involved as you've heard from Scott, the IT director. It wasn't as involved as it could have been. So there wasn't as much fees associated with it. So either the reserve fund or county general.
I like your second suggestion of the line item that's dedicated for that. And then at the end, if we need a budget amendment, we can, knowing it was a cyber incident. That would be my suggestion or your suggestion.
In the event later you want to change your mind, we can always do a journal entry from the reserve fund to cover it. So we can pay it out of the county general dedicated line item that was set up for the cyber incident or other things, because there was stuff that came up that we needed to get. There was hardware, drives that needed to be purchased, jump drives, different things that Scott needed to do to get everything back going. So that line item has already been used a little bit, so.
And so when looking at a total of what this incident costs us.
So it's to K Camp for four thousand, four hundred dollar, four thousand, four hundred dollars and fifty cents.
Look for a motion to approve this purchase order as presented by our finance director. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
So while we're on the subject, Martha. You may or may not have this information in front of you, but let's say this thing has gone to the next level and we've had to pay big dollars. Would, would this policy have paid that?
Yeah, it's covered up to a certain threshold. I, I don't know off the top of my head what that threshold is. I think it was a hundred thousand, but I, I may be wrong.
Well, so the, the reason I asked that is because ten thousand, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around perspective. So ten thousand dollar deductible. I mean, if you're talking a million bucks, that's, that's a pretty good percentage, but if you're talking a hundred grand, so that's a ten percent deductible. Yeah, that seems, I don't know, it seems high, maybe it's just me. I, I, I don't have, you know, and it's not like I have a lot of experience with cyber payoffs or, or anything, anything. So, so specifically this was just anything like overtime and that kind of thing wrapped in. Okay.
K Camp does cyber training courses. And they try to educate their customers or their clients on cyber incidents and how not, like what to look out for and how to upgrade your, your tech and your systems and to make sure that it doesn't happen. But I know that anyone will probably tell you it's when, when is it going to happen, not not if, but so the ten thousand, yeah, it doesn't take very long to reach ten thousand. But I don't think that it covers, I think it is a hundred thousand is the cap. So if there was that next level that you're talking about and there was ransom that we had to pay to get our data back or something, it probably would exceed a hundred thousand.
Sure, we'd be out that.
But I know Scott has done a great job of, of beefing up the security in the system, so I don't think that.
We're fortunate.
We're in a better spot now, for sure. So the next thing is request for payment from the Effingham Sports Complex to Game Time Athletics out of Weston, Missouri for renovations to the baseball softball fields or bullpens for twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. And then there's an invoice attached behind so that exchange knows how, or where to send the check.
I'll look for a motion to approve the request for payment as presented from our finance director. And seconded, all those in favor say aye.
I was meaning to get how much was left out of the allocation and I forgot to look, so I can send you guys an update if you want to know. Okay, and the third one is to BG Consultants for Professional Architectural and Engineering Services for three thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars to be paid out of the Senior Village sale proceeds. The original contract balance was sixty-two thousand, eight hundred. We've already paid four thousand, five sixty. So that leaves a remaining balance of fifty-four, nine eighty-four. But this PO is for three thousand, two fifty-six. There's an invoice back there if you want to see it too. And I know we've already approved the dollar amount, but I think it's best to have every expense approved each time.
That's probably crazy. Reading, it doesn't explain.
Joe sent it to me.
I think that's what he mentioned.
I don't know, it doesn't say.
I just, I think it'd be nice to keep track of what we're.
I can make sure that I find out what it is for every, every time.
And if the forty-five sixty also is the boring maybe, but just keeping track of each one of them would be helpful.
I can find that out. So if you'd rather wait and approve it next week?
No, I'm okay approving it. I just, I want to make sure we keep a detailed rundown of what it is. Cause on the back it gives hourly amounts, but it doesn't tell what it was for. So just to, it'll be good to keep tabs on what it's. I'll look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our finance director. I will second, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. I saw you picked up your pen, so I just. Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you.
Walnut Township Treasure Appointment. We have a letter of interest from Mary Jane Sowers, who lives in Walnut Township. And I can read this letter. Dear Atchison County Clerk and Atchison County Commissioners, I am writing to express my interest in the recent vacated Secretary Treasurer position for Walnut Township. I previously held this role and truly valued the opportunity to serve our community. In addition to my prior work as township tre, treasurer, I've served as treasurer for the Walnut Township Fire Department and have contributed to the Walnut Township Election Board for thirty-eight years, including several years as supervise, supervising judge. Supervising judge. These roles have equipped me with extensive experience in budgeting, record keeping, and financial oversight in the public service setting. Currently, I serve as the Assistant Coordinator for the Amelia Earhart Festival and sit on the boards. Of the Atchison Salvation Army and Atchison United Way. I can confidently assure you that none of these commitments would interfere with my ability to fulfill the duties of Secretary Treasurer role. I care deeply about Walnut Township and would be honored to serve again. I'm confident I can contribute immediately to help ensure our financial operations remain well organized, accurate, and transparent. Thank you for considering my application, I would be happy to meet at your convenience to discuss my qualifications further. Sincerely, Mary Jane Sowers. Look for a motion to appoint Mary Jane Sowers as Walnut Township Treasurer.
What are the requirements, did, did, did she live in that, that township in Hineson, that's? That's what she does, so.
She has to be an elector, so she has to be registered to vote.
Okay, and then, so she checks off all those. I make a motion to do that.
I'll second.
Right, okay, motion um, is made and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Maybe Jane Sowers, you appointed as Walnut Township Treasurer. Um, notices and communications, elec- election update. Uh, the candidate filing deadline was on Ju- June second at noon. And all the candidate information um is up to date on our website.
I've got something since it's election, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not. Um, Pat, uh, is the. Atchis- the rural fire district gonna be, have something on the ballot for their. You know, they came to hear about expanding their territory.
Haven't heard anything since then.
I, I was wondering, cause it's, it's, it like it got dropped, so I didn't know whether that was, uh, they were pursuing that or not. Something had reminded me of that just this morning, and I've written it down here anyway. And then when I said election, because that was a possible election, yeah, it was.
Yeah, it would be nice to get that update and an update on the uh, communication with the. Those areas that we didn't think were covered, I think Corey was doing that, it'd be nice to get that. Maybe that update on that also.
Thank you.
All right, um, let's do the attorney-client nuisance um properties for thirty minutes. Uh, executive session. Uh, Mr. Henderson and the Commissioners.
You said attorney-client. I moved at the Board of County Commissioners recessive executive session at ten fifty-seven. AM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by. KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be the three Commissioners and County Counselor.
Okay, I will second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to see. There's Joe out there, my gents, okay.
We have another executive session.
Uh, yeah, just. Just Commissioners. Hey, next up, we have Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge Superintendent, with a consideration of agreement to KDOT for Bridge fifteen dot four. Dash N dot six, request for payment number two to Tunks and a PO for Fox Boulevard Repair for Bourbon though.
You have the documents, so those are something that they've added. It's not a normal, it wasn't normal. And I didn't bring them in, because I didn't realize that they absolutely had to be taken care of, so we've already signed the agreement. This just has to do with the lobbying and.
Certification by participants as the current history regarding department. Department eligibility indictments, convictions, or civil judgments. Even federal funds, logging, certification, attachments, and these are for the bridge going to the.
No, this is Jewel Road north of uh Lancaster, this is, I think this is gonna be the norm from now on.
Okay, so I look for a motion to allow the chairs to sign um, these two documents as presented by our. Um, and our County Counselors also, we gave them, uh, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Then, my second one is uh, the second payment to Tunks. On Ottawa Road Project, putting in the three culverts for seventeen thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars fifty-seven cents, and that comes out of road. Projects, and here you can see the uh, this has the signatures of the contractor, the engineer. And myself on the payment, and until the first payment is made. That payment will be held, I will keep the check until they're done with the first culprit.
All right, I look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our Roden Bridge Superintendent.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
The third is a repair on Bourbon Road, just north of two thirty-eighth, we have a big box. And a wing fell off of it, concrete box, and this would be to replace that with sheet piling and. Uh, age pile, and then put tiebacks. From that side to the other side of the wing wall, the concrete, because they're all starting to pull apart at the top, this is. Something that happens to most of all of our aged structures, and then also go to the south side and put those tiebacks. In place to help hold the wing walls on the other side, and if we have, it's kind of an emergency, the, the uh. Erosion has cleared up the edge of the asphalt underneath the guardrail. And this is for eighty-three thousand eight hundred and five dollars with Norfolk. Contracting, and we would take that out of our contractual line item, and. Looking to get that, okay, there's, you guys have the drawings, if you wanna look, there's. And they would be able to start almost immediately next week, so.
I'd look for a motion to approv- approve the purchase order as presented by our Roden Bridge Superintendent. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we have a non-elected personnel um, executive session, twenty-five minutes with just Commissioners.
Say Commissioners only. This one we get set down, right?
Sorry.
No, it's I.
And actually, that's. Well, and that's the last order of business for today, so, yeah, just so you're not like waiting around again to come in while we adjourn. But thank you for coming, we appreciate you.
I'll move at the Board of County Commissioners recessive executive session at eleven thirty-three. PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy of rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in twenty-five minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be the three Commissioners.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. All right, so we are back in open session, um, and then I would look for a motion to adjourn into Commission Workshop.
So move, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.